Well, good evening. I'm Donna Bartlet May with the League of Women Voters of San Diego, [S01][S01] and I will be your moderator for tonight's virtual candidate forum. Thank you all for joining us, and thank you to the Torrey Pines Community Planning Group for hosting. While Zoom has its issues, for instance, my camera quality tonight is terrible. I look like I'm suffering from a severe sunburn. But we do miss seeing you all in person, and through Zoom, more people can hear directly from the candidates to help them make this important decision on their ballot. All websites referenced tonight are in the chat for your information. The League is proud to be nonpartisan, neither supporting nor opposing candidates or political parties, but always working on vital issues of concern to members and the public. Our Voters Edge website is your online resource for more information about the candidates, ballot issues, and detailed voting information. All candidates have been invited to include their information there at no cost to them. I hope both candidates tonight will take advantage of this opportunity. The League moderates candidate forums using a format that is fair and balanced and informative. We have asked the candidates to answer the questions rather than make personal attacks, because our goal is for the voters to be able to learn more about candidates than they can get from campaign ads and social media. We are recording this forum, and it will be available unedited from beginning to end on our website, l w v san diego dot org. We asked attendees to submit questions online before the forum, but you may also submit questions using the link provided in the chat box. Please remember to use civility and respect in wording your questions and frame them so both candidates can answer. The questions will be organized to assure topics of greatest interest are asked. Assisting tonight as lead question screeners are Jane Andrews and Nandita Carr, and the screener from the Torrey Pines Community Planning Group is Liz Shope. The timekeeper is League member Janelle Bendusen, planned to adjourn by 8:30. This is the forum for the San Diego City Council District One. Candidates will have two minutes for their opening statement, two minutes for their closing, and one minute to respond to each question from the audience. And we will alternate who answers each question first. Mr. Moore will have the first opening statement, and Mr. Lakava will have the first closing statement. So, Mr. Moore, if you can take yourself, there we go, your opening statement, please.
Hi, everybody. It's great to be here at the hosted by the Torrey Pines Community and the League Women Voters. Thank you all very much for having me here. I'm your neighbor, live right down the street here in Carmel Valley. Torrey Pines is where I run to when I go on about a two and a half mile run. It's my turnaround at about that 7-Eleven on Mango. I'm glad to be a member of this community, have been for about a decade and a half, raised my son here, student at Ocean Air for seven years, been going to Torrey Pines for a couple of years now. Of course, he's distance learning as an 11th grader. Started my business here. I'm a small business lawyer, have my, the Moore firm. I represent small businesses, mid-sized businesses, been involved in the community for a long time. And I've also worked for a lot of nonprofits, co-founder of the San Diego Leadership Alliance, served on that board for a long time, the Urban League, the local chapter of the American Constitution Society, and on and on. So my work here with the community has been deep. And what I'm trying to accomplish by running for city council is really have a city that moves us into the next several decades. I feel like we've been a backwards-looking city for a long time. And us here in District One, that's not who we are. We all came here from far away. I came here from Macon, Georgia. I have a friend who came here from Mumbai. Of course, we have folks who grew up here from Topeka and Seattle, and we all come here to make a better life. And we want to be able to provide that to our kids without them having to move back down the scale, out, you know, Flagstaff, and we're raising our kids on Skype and that sort of thing. So we need to make this a city where our young people and graduates can live, where our climate is good, where our businesses thrive. And that's why I'm running for the future of San Diego. Thank you very much, and I'm Will Moore.
Thank you. Mr. Lakava?
Well, thank you. I thank you to the planning board for hosting and to the League for moderating, and of course, to all of you for attending tonight for this important conversation about our future of our district. My name is Joe Lakava, and I am a native San Diegan, son of Italian immigrants. My father was a factory worker, my mother a seamstress. And I went to San Diego State, just to kind of give you a little bit of a bio background. And that education allowed me to become a licensed civil engineer, kind of a unique talent that has never been on the city council. And that career led me to public infrastructure, housing, and public policy. And as you can tell, some of the critical issues that our city faces. But the real reason that I'm running is really because of my community service over nearly 20 years. Starting in my school, where my wife currently teaches as a public school kindergarten teacher, I began working on committees and boards initially just as a resource, but soon arose through the ranks because of my leadership qualities, to serve on nearly 30 boards, commissions, local planning groups, and often being asked to be chair. And it is that experience where I began to get projects built, problems solved, and questions answered. I became the go-to person for a lot of media about what was happening down at City Hall that has really given me the background and experience to be your next city council member. In fact, it is the next logical step. You know, each of those boards and commissions had a specific task which we accomplished and were productive. But I realized those are only usually advisories, so I can only get so much done as a part-time community leader. That's why I want the job to be your full-time council member and to begin to deal with the quality of life issues in our neighborhoods, as well as the big issues that our city currently faces. And I'll close by saying that I'm certainly no stranger to this area. I've been to quite a few of the planning board meetings. I was involved in the One Paseo battle, and I look forward to your questions again, Joe Lakava. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to start with the questions. Mr. Moore, you'll go first with this first question. Beyond the independent review board, how would you address racial injustice in policing in our legal system in San Diego?
Well, I think that what we need to do, and I would encourage everybody to go to the Union Tribune, where Joe and I both wrote what I thought were both pretty thoughtful editorials about exactly this question. I think we need to review what we're asking our police to do. I think we need to make sure that we have folks who, if they're going out on these quality-of-life calls, somebody is living outside, somebody is creating perhaps a nuisance, because, you know, living is a messy thing to do outside, that they're not necessarily every time going to have to be confronted with, you know, a fully armed officer who is trained in peacekeeping more than they're trained in social work. So we need to change the focus of how our policing works in some cases. Obviously, you know, a lot of our policing needs to have those other aspects, but we need to have options that we can choose from when we face different kinds of policing problems.
Thank you. Mr. Lakava?
Well, thank you. An important question that's been going on for a long time, and finally has risen to the level that we're all starting to pay attention to. You know, I serve on the Police Community Relations Board, which was comprised to really deal with this exact issue. And the challenge I think we have is really the leadership in the mayor's office, because he directs what the police chief does and how the department operates. We pushed forward the San Diego State Traffic Stop Study that had 10 recommendations. Those were repeated in the ACLU study, other common sense things. My board put forward 30 recommendations last year that covers a wide range of issues, that from training to recruitment, to how we position our officers more as warriors instead of guardians. The other thing we need to do is get to that mid-career police officer. Our field training officers are much too young for those recruits coming out of the academy. And that's just the beginning of the conversation within my one-minute time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Mr. Lakava. How do we build more low-income and moderate-income, high-density and mixed-use housing in our communities without destroying those unique communities? And will you accept input from the community planning groups?
The very definition of what I've been doing for the past 20 years is about community and neighborhood input, leading planning groups, as well as the larger community planners committee. That is certainly the reputation that I'm walking into the city council office with. You know, the challenge we have, and we don't talk about this, is that we don't have a structural way to deliver on low- and moderate-income housing. And that's going to be one of the first things that I'm going to jump on. The things that we've been doing are fine, but they're trickling. They're not really generating enough of the housing that we need. We need to come up with better solutions. We need to come up with better alternatives, such as alternative construction methods that can reduce the construction cost. We have to look at leveraging publicly-owned land, so we can take the land cost out of the deal. Thank goodness, MTS is starting to do that. Our city needs to step up and do that. And we're also looking at alternatives of purchasing motels and distressed properties as an alternative as well. So it's a range of things, but everybody has to come to the table and work on this together, because we're not just getting there.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Well, I think that one thing we need to recognize is that we haven't created an environment where people, where in the past 30 years, we haven't even created enough housing for just our own kids to be able to stay in this town. And we've done that by putting barriers really unnecessarily in the face of housing, some of which make a lot of sense, but some of which have gone a little too far. So we need to have every neighborhood recognize that we got to have someplace for our own kids to live. And that's more housing, more affordable housing. We can do that in every neighborhood without. And we don't need to get scared about change and about things being different. They're not going to be that different. But when you have a situation where, when you propose, you know, a 10-unit apartment complex, you encourage everybody or 20 people to come out and say, no, that will change my neighborhood. Well, that's the sort of thing we need to get away from. We need to have a bias towards getting things accomplished rather than resisting getting our housing built just so our own kids can live here. I think we owe that to the next generation.
Thank you. Mr. Moore, we'll start the next question with you. How would you address the problem of the short-term rentals in District One?
Well, I think the short-term rentals problem we have really is concentrated along the shore, along the La Jolla coast, as I've gone around and talked to thousands and thousands of people here in the district. That's where I noticed it the most. There's some of it up in the mountain. And I did notice when I was walking around, especially in Upper La Jolla, if I had somebody who was a much, much older person, there was a good chance the person answering that door was somebody renting their place as a vacation rental, because their kids just flip it into that when mom and dad pass on. And I think there's a proposal on the table. We have some of the groups that have been fighting with each other for a long time have come up with a proposal to reduce those short-term vacation rentals by 70% and put some solid rules on them and make sure they don't grow beyond the scope of what we have here in San Diego as our housing stock already. I think that proposal is a good start. I think there are some folks that have rejected it out of hand. I don't think that's a smart approach, because what we've already been doing for the past three or four years hasn't solved the problem, and it stagnated and just allowed anarchy to run wild. And I think this deal is a good start to that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Lakava?
An important question, something I've been working with down at the city for several years now. First of all, we have to understand that we have a law that says short-term vacation rentals are illegal. And we should not be playing winners and losers by the city. The city should be uniformly enforcing the law that we have on the books. So let's start with that. We have reportedly up to 16,000 units. This is not a coastal La Jolla problem. This is an issue that crosses net neighborhoods as far east as North Park and many communities. And I've heard the complaints left and right. I've heard about an apartment building built on Alcoa Home Boulevard that was converted to a short-term vacation rental instead of 12 critically-needed residential units. There is a proposal on the table. I don't really trust the city to actually turn that into a real ordinance. Let's not forget, Barbara Bree put an ordinance on the table. It was blown up. George G. Gomez put a home-sharing ordinance on the table. It was blown up by the platforms. We simply can't trust them. Let's enforce the law.
Thank you very much. Mr. Lakava, we'll start this question with you. Small businesses are suffering due to pandemic, and some have closed their doors. Do you plan to help them keep their doors open?
Now, this is certainly one of the tragedies of the pandemic, is the economic outfall from that. And if the pandemic continues, as we're looking at, it's really going to make it difficult for these businesses to hang on much longer. You know, the city is in its own bind in terms of having limited economic resources to share. So we're really looking to grab as many state and federal resources as we can to help those out and continue to work with the landlords in terms of renegotiating temporary leases that are more favorable. I've talked to a number of landlords that in fact are doing that, and offering the kinds of regulatory relief that we've seen happen. It happened a little slow, but the idea of allowing them to come out on the sidewalks and the streets, not only will save some of them, but will be maybe a new future for us in the city of San Diego. But I'm going to be working with business leaders who actually understand their businesses rather than the city imposing its own ideas of what the solutions are.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
So I've been advising small, mid-sized businesses like these for the past 17 years, since I graduated from Columbia Law. Indeed, I advise small, mid-sized businesses like this before that, when I was a Peace Corps volunteer in West Africa. That was my Peace Corps job, as odd as that is. We have to start any discussion about COVID with the virus. We have to beat the virus. And as long as this thing is running through our community with high levels, where we're going to transmit really quickly if we open back up, we're not going to have success. In fact, we just saw this cycle in the past three, four weeks. We opened things up more than we should. Get back in the, what the state of California calls the purple zone for some reason, but the bad zone where you have to close things down. Now we're going to have to close things down again. And as long as we're bouncing up and down like that, that costs a lot more to those small businesses than just staying closed or staying partially open, so you're using the outside, than it does to, than it does to stay closed and then open when we've actually got a sustainable way to open our businesses without people actually getting sick and without having that community spread. It has to start with the virus. We can work with businesses to accommodate our, as we learn more about how we can do business, to make sure they're as open as they can be safely.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moore, we'll start this question with you. Climate change is obviously on a lot of people's minds these days. How do you think the city should address the threat of rising sea levels, especially as it affects Las Penasquitas Lagoon and the Torrey Pines Beach and Bluffs?
Well, we have major problems with climate change. Climate change was the, and is the, you know, primary focus of the way I've started this campaign, climate housing jobs. You've heard me say it, if you're probably in this list of attendees over here a couple of times. Climate change is one of those problems. When I talk about leaving the place that our kids can live in, that's what we're talking about. And we can mitigate climate change here by using our solar resources. We have 300 days of sunshine a year. And we're going to need to mitigate the impacts of climate change. We have our, the folks down in Serrano Valley and near the Penasquitos Lagoon, there are biotech companies that flood routinely during the rainy season over the past several years. We have, obviously, you've looked outside of the last couple of days. We have the air quality problem. We need to make sure our fire resources are staffed up. We need to make sure that lagoon is taken care of so that the wetlands can actually absorb the additional rainfall. And with respect to, we got to figure out where we're going to put that train track, because as we all know here in the Torrey Pines neighborhood, that's going in to drink at some point. And showing it up isn't going to be a long-term solution.
Sorry, we're out of time. Mr. Lakava?
An incredibly important question that most elected officials and candidates would like to dodge. You know, if we're really believers in climate change, then we have to face reality as sea level rise. You know, for whatever climate fight that we have as a city through our climate action plan is not going to stop some of the negative effects, whether it's the fires or, as you mentioned, sea level rise, that it can impact in a lot of different directions, including a significant loss of our public beaches, because they're constrained by a public road or building or private buildings. We have to have that very tough conversation. We have to bring the adaptation studies that the city has underway forward and start talking about that as a public and for elected officials to be leaders in that conversation about what we're going to do. I know City of Del Mar tried to have that conversation. It is a painful, ugly conversation when you're talking about damage to private property. But you can't call yourself a leader if you're not willing to have that hard conversation. So let's start that conversation now.
Thank you. Mr. Lakava, contingent with climate change, what action steps would you take to make the city greener?
Well, we do have a climate action plan. We need to update it. I'd like to divide it into three parts. The first part was the easy part. A lot of the state mandates helped us achieve the goals in the early stages. The adoption of the CCE is another major component. We need to make sure that that moves swiftly forward and shifting us to 100% recycled energy. And that includes, of course, solar within our individual rooftops. And it has a large component of tree coverage. That is an important component. What we're going to have, we're probably going to have a hiccup here because of the pandemic and the impact on city revenues and the distraction that that creates. But it also includes electrifying. I read some, we're doing hydrogen cell stations that will help us. So it is a combined effort detailed in the climate action plan. And we have to do a climate implementation plan that actually gives us the guidepost to going forward.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
I think that climate plans are good. We've had actually some studies come out recently that have told us that how aggressive your climate action plan is doesn't actually tell you much about how much progress you make. So sometimes politicians use those to kick the can down the road and make themselves feel good about things they've accomplished when they've made a plan for someone else to implement. What we need to do is look at where our people are living. Are they living closer to our job centers? Or they having to commute in from Temecula? 48% of our emissions in San Diego are transportation-related. So we need to get people where they're not having to drive as far. We need to give people alternatives. I've found here in the Carmel Valley, Torrey Pines area, we have a lot of thirst for people to get alternative ways to get around. Not that they necessarily are going to be getting rid of their car, because that's not really a practical way to live in the suburbs. But if you can take one or five, you know, one out of five, one out of 10 trips off of the road, then that decreases our carbon impact pretty quickly, and in fact, speeds up our traffic and quality of life as well. So our infrastructure can be aided, and we can use our renewable resources a lot more effectively as well.
Thank you very much. A very specific question from Torrey Pines. What do you think about a bus that would run east-west on Del Mar Heights Road now with its three high schools, or at least when school starts up, not 20 years in the future? Mr. Moore?
Oh, I love this one. So this is actually a major thing that we talk about. That bus, because we got Canyon Crest, we got Catholic, the Catholic School, and Torrey Pines right across the street from me here, where 6,000 students go to school every day, and we have this massive congestion as everybody tries to go to work. And everybody who's going to work from, you know, Pacific Islands Ranch, especially where they have really this major problem, notices that when those schools aren't in, traffic just flies. So we need to change the MTS's prohibition on considering where schools are when they set out bus routes, because we could get, even if we don't get all those kids, if we get a lot of them not driving to school, we're going to make a big difference in that, in that problem. And I've noticed that folks in Carmel Valley are really, really looking, didn't expect it, really looking for alternatives and ways to get around our area more effectively, because we're all just tired of having to sit in our cars all the time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lakava.
Well, of course, that's a brilliant idea and long overdue, that we kind of forget that our newest neighborhoods are actually very much interested in transit. I've heard a lot of folks talking about, why can't we bring school buses back to get the high school students and the middle school students off to school to eliminate the congestion and the idling and the gases that come out of that? You know, a lot of folks were pretty excited when One Paseo was going to provide a shuttle service that they thought would be kind of a de facto transit service, and that really didn't materialize. But we have to, you know, extend bus service. We have to press MTS to consider about bus service. And if we can get electrified buses, even that much better. And then figure out how to loop Torrey Hills into that conversation as well. And perhaps we can look at state or federal funding that would bring us back to school buses without having parents having to shell out major dollars every year to just have something that really makes a good sense for everyone.
Thank you. Mr. Lakava, you have the next question. How would you prioritize infrastructure and capital needs when the city income is so reduced due to the virus?
Well, certainly, infrastructure is in my wheelhouse. And I was having some really fantastic conversations with city council a few years ago, with council member Mark Kersey at the time. And we were making fantastic progress on that, because the city has a tremendous infrastructure deficit. And actually, the deficit is much, much larger than what the city actually will admit to. And, you know, I'm afraid with the pandemic, infrastructure is going to have to take a backseat. We're not going to be able to tackle our infrastructure deficit until we start identifying new revenue sources. And those are just not going to be available right now. You know, we have to build new trust in the citizens of San Diego that we can deal with the money that we have now before we start talking about new revenue services. I'm hoping with the new mayor that we'll really start to really look in deeply in the budget and find excess money that we can start to tackle with it. I would have loved to come in and talk, I'm going to be the infrastructure guy. It's going to be my job on day one. We have to get through the pandemic, see the economy recover before we have that conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Well, as we, as we grow into the next decade, obviously, the next couple of years are going to be a little thin. We've lost $300 million in revenue or more over the past, just the past year, and projected forward into the next budget cycle. That's on a $1.4 billion general fund. And in the rest of the pots that the city has money in, that we have equivalent problems. So we're definitely going to have problems with funding, but there are things we can do that we do badly at the city that are not necessarily just money. Anybody who lives over on High Bluff Drive off of that area just north of Del Mar Heights Road will notice that that area has been paved now three times in the past two years. We have contracting problems in the city where we have onerous contracting rules that make it very difficult for contractors to qualify, which gets us these little mini oligopolies of only a few contractors we can use, so we keep recycling them around and don't have the same kind of quality control we need. So we need to reform that process so we can get better work done, and that'll actually lower the cost and actually get things done more effectively. I think.
Thank you very much.
There's a lot more, sorry.
This is actually a question related to what Mr. Moore was just speaking about. This questioner feels there's something very wrong with the street repair program at the city and feels that some streets are being repaved every five years while others have not been repaved in 15 years, and that these slurry seal jobs are pretty sloppy. How would you change this? And do you, can you explain the street repair program as it is now?
Well, the street repair, yeah, okay. The street repair program that we have now, everybody's on a schedule, so you have like when your street's supposed to be repaired. Theoretically, when we're doing like undergrounding or something, we put that right before the street resurfacing. So if you've driven down Serrano Valley Road, which is in this planning group recently, you'll notice that it's like it's been bombed, right? And you complain about it, and they say, well, we have additional infrastructure work to do before we pave that over. And so there's a schedule to it. But yeah, we have major contracting problems in the city where things happen slowly and more expensively than they have to. And some of that is in these legal requirements we've put in that aren't really, that seem like a good idea. Sometimes you say, oh, don't you think we should have this requirement? And it sounds good, but it doesn't turn out to be a good idea when you stack 19 or 20 of them on top of each other. So that has created a lot of the problems we have in the city, and I think that's one of the ways we can address it.
Thank you. Mr. Lakava?
Well, obviously, a critical question, especially here in Del Mar Heights. You know, we have to change the idea that a slurry seal has anything to do with street repair. It's really just like a coat of paint and often doesn't even last as long as a coat of paint. But when you have an administration that is more interested in the photo op of, quote, fixing streets, you're going to continue to get slurry seals as your preferred way, because it's cheaper and you can do a lot more streets. You can brag about the miles. And that thinking has to simply change. What we have to look a little bit harder at is how we actually repair the streets that need repair. And as a civil engineer, I'll be able to have a more critical eye on what we're doing. The other part of it is really the value engineering. We don't really have a good value engineering to make sure that we're spending the least amount of dollars to get the best possible job on there. And we have an ordinance that's supposed to take care of the timing of paving and slurry seals. And we have so many exceptions that we don't even follow it, and you get exactly the problem that you described.
Thank you. Mr. Lakava, we'll start this question with you. We have been promised green bike lane striping on Del Mar Heights Road. What would you do to promote safer bike lanes?
Well, I'm very proud to have been endorsed by Bike San Diego. And, you know, that currently is watched by the current council office, and so I want to be a little bit careful about the progress that they're making. But what we have to do is to say how serious we are about providing safe biking for those who want to do that. And we know it's a small percentage, but we don't want people risking their life if they decide to take a bikes. During the epidemic, we've seen a tremendous upsurge in those people that are biking. And I suspect a good portion of them will continue, even when the epidemic and the restrictions are relaxed. So I intend to be a leader in the conversation. It is certainly part of what our climate action plans, as we're committed to do, and our mobility plans are calling for. So as a civil engineer, I know the lingo. I know how to talk to staff. I know how to identify it in the CIP programs to make sure we're getting it done. And so you can count on me being a leader in this conversation.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Well, as a, as somebody who lives right next to Del Mar Heights Road and has a bicycle that I can ride, because even though I used to be a cyclist, I rode my bike all the way across France once in about nine days and didn't even have a car in college. So we, urban cycling is near and dear to my heart. But, you know, you get to about 30, 40, you don't want to take your life into your hands every time you go out on the road. So we need separated bike lanes. We need safe bike lanes that are really places you can, in a relaxed manner, where you're not sweaty and stinky when you get where you're going, you can get around town. I think we need to anticipate there's going to be a bit of a revolution coming. We're going to have these electrified bikes. If anybody If anybody's, anybody I've ever seen ride one of these things just goes crazy about how wonderful they are because that eliminates the problems we have with our, with our canyons and mesas throughout San Diego. So Delmar Heights Road is one of our, we have three major infrastructure, you know, problems in District One, which is Delmar Heights and the Torrey Pines Road where it comes into La Jolla and Governor. And all of those roads, I think, need some rethinking and upgrading because we can do better with 2020 road technology than we did in 1960 or 1985.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Mr. Moore, we'll start this question with you. What is, what is your opinion about the Delmar Heights Elementary rebuild project?
I think that, you know, this has been, this has been a problem that's been a major controversy before the Delmar Union School District for a long time. I've spoken to people on both sides of it, spoken to people at the school board. And what we have is, and we call them crabs in a bucket. You know, the lack of resources makes people fight over things. There's not a city park west of the five over in the 902, 92014 area. And that's one of the problems. We've offloaded that responsibility to the Delmar Heights, Delmar Union School District. I would say we need to make the city actually go get these joint use agreements. They've been offered, they've been rejected and hasn't worked out. I think we do need to get that school project done. I think that delaying things with sequel lawsuits, I'm really just not in favor of that. And no, not, that's not necessarily popular with everybody in this room. But I think that that school does need to get built for our kids' sake. But we can make sure that parkland gets done in the right way. So we have places to recreate in our community.
Thank you, Mr. Lakava.
Critical question. It's a little bit sad to go through the neighborhood and see these opposing yard signs as neighbor turning against neighbor. And I've been a little bit horrified by the way the school board has allowed this to really escalate. That isn't really helpful to anyone, you know, and certainly doesn't help the children. The, the school board has made the case that the current school is really inadequate and in fact, dangerous to hold classes on. So we need to, to deal with that. But, you know, as was mentioned, the city of San Diego has promised Torrey Pines that it would have, you know, in excess of 15 acres of parkland. And we don't have any parkland there. And there really isn't no practical way to be able to get that kind of acreage or play fields or athletic fields to serve the community. And it really isn't fair to the community to have to leap over the freeway to use the ones in Carmel Valley. You know, we need to have a new conversation. Right now, it's not a sequel lawsuit, it's a coastal development permit they're pursuing. We need to take a breather and really bring people together. And I really would ask the school board to step up and lead.
Thank you very much. Similarly, along those lines, what do you, Mr. Lakava, what do you think about joint use fields with the Delmar Unified School District, which is currently against that plan because they claim the city is not maintaining the current joint use fields in Carmel Valley?
Well, the city's ability to maintain the, the city facilities is a well-known problem in probably every single community in town. I know they're not doing the joint use. I know there's some public parks that are not being maintained. You know, we have to hammer out an agreement. The location of the playfield in the new school rebuild is a little bit awkward, but it is certainly a possibility. I think it's a matter of really stepping up. A lot of times, cities don't like to mess with school boards and vice versa. But I think this is an opportunity where the school can be a good neighbor and we have to button down the issues that are at play. Make sure we have the resources to do the, the maintenance there, which isn't that much. And really assign the maintenance responsibility based on the level of activity that is anticipated to, to happen there. So I'm confident that we could actually work out and prepared to lead on that conversation. And it's critically important to not only the school board and the children, but the district as a whole.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
Well, I think the, I think Delmar Union has a decent complaint there. As my son went ocean air and, you know, was a, was a Sharks soccer player for a very long time when he was a little younger. And we were up in, on that ocean air field up there, which is a joint use park, which is just a nightmare. If, you know, if you're a little kid, it doesn't bother you. But if you try to run around there with adult ankles, you know, you're, you're taking your ankles into your own hands. So we do need to have better, better programs to make sure we do take care of and do our part with those joint use fields. I think that if we, there's a deal we can work out to make sure that joint use does benefit because right now we're not doing anything. We're not, we're just not pulling our weight at all as a city. And we can do better and we can get these two groups at the table. I've spent my entire career getting people who have been not getting along with each other for a long time together to, by just asking them what their real priorities are and how we can make some sort of agreement that benefits everyone and that way our entire community can grow.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moore, we'll start this question with you. If the coastal height limit is raised in the Midway area, will that affect our community? Do you believe changing the height limit there would set a precedent that will affect other coastal communities?
No.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Lakava.
The simple answer is no. We've done the change the coastal height limit a couple of times already and it didn't have a slippery slope effect. I am in support of the changing the height limit in the Midway area. And the good folks here in District One can make sure that I will make sure that that doesn't happen beyond the westerly boundary of the Midway Plan. That's what I offer in response to that question. It will not be the slippery slope. And we will make sure that the city stops making planning decisions that set the table for future conversations about the height limit. The 30-foot height limit is the 30-foot height limit. Let's make sure any plans coming forward in those coastal areas, respect that going forward. And that takes the pressure off any time, any attempt to try to change it.
Thank you. Mr. Lakava, we'll start the next question with you. Community Planning Board feels that Sorrento Valley has more potential than just being home to pot shops and storage places. The area would be great for high-density mixed-use buildings, including biotech with the Penasquitos Riverwalk. How do we get the area to live up to the potential described in the area's community plan?
Sure, you know, I think that's one of the ongoing problems where areas become forgotten simply because the community plan is old or felt to be out of date. There is a lot of potential. There's also a lot of challenges down there with the flooding and the unstable soils that are there. So we have to be careful that our drains don't exceed what the land will actually offer us. But there certainly isn't any reason that we can't revitalize that area. You know, we're starting to run out of good places for people to build. It's a little bit out of the way, so I'm a little concerned about access for employees and increasing congestion. But I think that area should be considered. Once we figure out some of the engineering issues that are at stake for the kind of development that the planning board is envisioning and the community plan had aspired to at some point.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Yeah, I think Sorrento Valley is one of the most high potential, one of the most high potential areas in the entire city. But we do face a lot of problems down there. We do have in that area next to the, next to the freeway, we have issues with CalDoc. We have sound regulations where you could put people's apartments right there and they, and they really resonate in a way that doesn't work for, for residences. So there are some engineering challenges, there are some legal challenges as well because some of our, some of our sensitive habitats are right there in the lagoon. And we don't want to, to do things right next to it that are going to affect that MHPA. So I would say that we can make, I think we can do a lot better. Obviously, Torrey Hills is right on the other side of that freeway. And you go under the freeway and you're all of a sudden in what's a little bit this wasteland, which could be one of the most beautiful attractions in our city. So we really have potential there. I think we have potential to think, think very big with what we can do with Sorrento Valley. And we don't have to be bound by what we see today. We can envision what we can see in two, three decades.
Thank you very much, Mr. Lakava.
Oh, I answered the question already?
Sorry, about ahead of myself. We've got another question here. We'll start with you, Mr. Moore. What role does the community planning group play? How much do you value their decisions? Say, for example, they voted year after year to have their DIF CIP funds used for a traffic light at a certain location for 15 years in order to make the main thoroughfare safer. What would you do to help them get that light?
Well, that, that light has created a little bit of controversy over the past year here at our, our Torrey Pines Community Planning Group. We are, it looks like that light is going in, so we're going to make sure that happens. I think that, and I want to answer the Delmar Heights Road question a little more. But I think the community planning group question, a community planning group ideally is the place where a representative group of our community all comes in and tells, you know, the folks at City Hall. And this is the, the representatives, the, the council members' job to some extent. But we can't, we can't know every little detail. So that you get the community to come together at these meetings and really hash things out the way they want them and the way they want to talk about them. I think the community planning groups could stand to be a little more representative. They tend to be, to skew a little older, a little wider. And we need to figure out ways to bring in people like renters, younger people, people with kids. Because if you have kids, you know, and you do, and you do community things, you notice that those folks between about 30 and 50 just kind of disappear until their kids go to college. And we need to figure out a way to involve them in the process.
Sure, well, I'm, I always call myself the biggest cheerleader of planning groups in the city, having served on mine for nine years and served with the Umbrella Community Planners Committee over the years. And been frustrated by a lot of the talk, which I think is just a distraction. We have bigger problems in this city than talking about the status of the planning groups. I offered Scott Sherman to give me a couple of days and I'll do the reform on council policy 600-24. I'm going to look to the planning groups, to their advice as city policies, individual private developments come through. And we'll take those recommendations seriously. You can't recruit new people if you're not delivering the actions that they're, they're calling for. I'll look a little bit deeper about why it's taken so long. It is supposedly in the traffic light is in the CIP. I was at that very contentious meeting. It wasn't contentious, it was one of the most brilliant community planning group meetings I've ever seen, where 50/50 split, but they were articulate and they were on point. And it was just nice to watch, but I will be listening to the planning group board here.
Thank you very much. Again, referring specifically to community groups, Torrey Pines is a small group and they feel they've been neglected with more emphasis being placed on Carmel Valley, La Jolla and University City. They feel they're a cash cow with their property taxes, but the money isn't being spent in their community. Will that change under your representation, Mr. Lakava?
It certainly will. I, I heard that loud and clear when I first stepped up there. You know, there's always a little bit of confusion for folks about, you know, where does Delmar Heights end? And where does the city of Delmar start? But it is one of the important communities in District One. And it deserves all the attention that every other community does. And that's one of the reasons that I've spent so much time up to and with the planning board attending their meetings. As I mentioned earlier, you know, when I heard their concerns about the One Paseo project and the impact on fire station response time, I embraced that issue and worked with them about how we could deal with that. And it's just one tiny example. But, you know, I think the first commitment, without looking at any council members in the past, is to get a representative that is there month after month after month and really gets to know how the planning group operates, what their issues are. They deserve the attention despite, and with their diverse neighborhoods, there's a lot of variability in there that needs to be respected.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore.
Well, of course, Torrey Pines is one of those, one of those communities that it does get lumped in with Carmel Valley when we, and I lived in Torrey Hills for seven years and I tried to get people to admit that Torrey Hills was a thing other places in the city and they just ignored me. And they said, no, you live in Carmel Valley. So I gave up and just referred to the whole ball of wax as Carmel Valley up here. And so having lived, you know, now, since I moved to Carmel Valley about three years ago, from Torrey Hills, you know, live a mile down the street. And, you know, this is one of the most valuable communities in our city, one of the oldest communities in our city. And it does, but up to Delmar goes a lot further, as you can see just from the map, than anybody really imagines it does. And we don't get the services up here that we deserve. The MTS doesn't even act like we don't even exist up here. So we have no transit services. They, they, they don't even charge some, and some of these stores over by the Vans, they don't even charge the right tax rate. They charge the Delmar tax rate. So we need to have a representative from the neighborhood who's going to focus the mind of the people at City Hall that we do exist and we are here to be counted.
Thank you very much. Going to a more general question, starting with Mr. Moore. What do you think is the biggest problem for District One and how would you plan to address it?
I think the biggest, as I walk around and talk to thousands and thousands of people, the thing that people are most concerned about after schools, which of course, we don't really have a lot of jurisdiction over, is the cost of living and the quality of our life here. We pay so much and even those of us who are doing kind of okay. I live in this condo here in the center of Carmel Valley. And even I'm paying probably a thousand dollars more than is reasonable for this place every month. And that kind of just decreases everybody's ability to get ahead. And we've all worked really hard. We had a lot of very, very well-educated, very successful people, doctors, lawyers, entrepreneurs. And that headwind that just the expense of living here, which is really unnecessary, it weighs on us. And the concern that we have for our kids, whether they're going to be able to stay in the neighborhood, also weighs on us. So that's a, a citywide problem that also focuses us here in, in District One in a very impactful way, and we need to try to fix that.
Thank you, Mr. Lakava.
Well, I'm going to give you two answers because if you look at the district, we really are kind of a 50/50 mix. You have, as your earlier question said, Delmar Heights, University City, La Jolla, our oldest communities in the district. And you have Torrey Hills, Carmel Valley, Pacific, Pacific Islands Ranch and Delmar Mesa as our newest communities. What I heard when I was out knocking doors during the, during the primary and talking to people on the phones is a split answer on that. For our newest communities, it is, don't screw it up for us. We have a high quality of life, preserve our natural open spaces, it gives us room to breathe and take care of the city facilities that we've built and cherish. In our older communities, it's our infrastructure. It's aging, it's falling apart, it causes environmental damage, it causes tripping hazards when the sidewalks aren't being fixed. And so it's really more of an infrastructure issue. And so I think that's, it's really a two-pronged issue here in District One.
Thank you very much. We have two questions here that are sort of interrelated. One is more than 1 million San Diego County residents are currently experiencing food insecurity, according to the San Diego Hunger Coalition. If elected, what types of policies will you support and actions will you take to create a hunger-free San Diego? And let me add on to that the question of homelessness that we have. And just a general question on how to address the issue of homelessness. And I'm going to give you each two minutes since I've combined two questions. Mr. Lakava?
Okay, well, let's talk about the food insecurity. You know, what a tragedy in, for someone to live in San Diego or even to live in this country and have to worry about food insecurity. You know, part of that is the two-tier economic system that we have with the low wages of our service industry. And yet, we don't have a way to accommodate them in a housing thing. That earlier question you had about housing that's affordable to low and moderate income. And so there's a lot of pressure on the housing element, which translates to people making hard choices of either being homeless or trying to find enough food. And certainly looking to the county of San Diego, who finally, finally is starting to step up and meet their responsibility as the purveyor of health and human services and their access to state and federal dollars to be able to tackle some of these things. We have to make sure we have a sharp focus on this because it's not only about the health of parents, but it's also the impact it has on children if they're, if they're not eating well. It affairs with their growth and their physical health and even their ability to learn. That's one of the key things that every teacher knows. Make sure that child is well-fed before they come to school because otherwise, you're not going to be in the mood to learn. The homeless, the homeless issue is a little bit similar in that we have failed to actually do what every expert has told us is the only solution. And that is permanent supportive housing. We're finally getting some action because of the need to move folks out of the convention center, things that we should have started years ago. But all we do is talk and study and talk and study. I'm committed to actually starting moving forward on, on permanent supportive housing for those who need it. I'm rapid rehousing for those who have a slight economic bump. And again, having the county step up for the social services that are needed, that they're required to provide. That holistic approach will really get us and be able to tackle the homeless. We're never going to solve it, but we should make much more progress than we have. And we're spending too much money with no real results.
Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Well, we have a, when we talk about hunger and homelessness, those relate back to the same source. We have poverty. We have folks in this town who are working two or three jobs, paying half of their income in rent. We have folks, we have folks that are working full-time jobs, living in cars in San Diego. And there are some other folks that have made the choice to just buy less food so they can pay rent, so they can still live inside. And that's not a choice you can put in front of wide swaths of your community and still have a functioning community in a few years. And that's some of what we're seeing. One of the ways that we can address that, and we can, we can work with food bank and do charitable, charitable food distribution and that sort of thing. But, you know, honestly, nobody wants to be the person who goes to the food bank to get the charitable food. People want to support themselves, people want to work and, and have that. People want to support themselves. People want to work and and have that living wage be something that they can function on. So I I don't want to go down that path as much. I think we have created structural barriers to. Getting people in housing they can afford. We have created structural barriers to building places that people can live close to their jobs. And I think we need to revisit that here in San Diego because again, we don't have enough housing for just our own kids to live here. So you know, we, we work hard, we come to San Diego, we grow up here. And we want to be able to enjoy that life, but if you're paying half of your income in rent or seventy percent of your income in rent. You have a hiccup. You lose a job for a month, two, you're not even chronically unemployed. You're out on the street. And that is not a society that we can sustain. And we can run all these programs that, you know, I, I think permanent supportive housing is great insofar as it goes. Rapid rehousing is great insofar as it goes. The long-term success rates of those are only as successful as people's ability to get into real housing. Real permanent housing that they're paying the rent on, and right now they can't do that. So they eventually bounce right back out into the system. So we need to address our underlying problem, which is frankly a little harder to discuss because it talks about how we need to restructure our our lives.
Thank you very much. Thank you both very much. Before our candidates give their closing remarks, I want to thank you all for attending and asking such good questions. Ensure your registered vote and that your address is correct on SDvote.com and be sure to fill out your census form at my2020census.gov. That money is important to all our communities. Also, please check the league calendar at LWVSanDiego.org for more league events where we give in-depth information in all sides of critical issues affecting our communities. And now for the candidates' closing statements. Each candidate, as I said, will have two minutes and we will begin with Mr. Moore. I'm sorry, we will begin with Mr. Lakava.
Okay, no problem. You know, a lot has changed since we kicked off our campaigns. Today we face a pandemic and economic crisis, extreme fires, along with a focus on racial inequity. Dealing with all these issues is going to require tough decisions from the new mayor and city council. Decisions that must be driven by fact-based conversations while ensuring that all stakeholders are at the table. For nearly two decades, I have been driving such discussions in the public eye. I have served on nearly thirty local committees, planning groups, city boards and commissions, each with a defined task that we accomplished and moved on. But the real story is that time and time again, I stepped up to lead those organizations. City leaders and San Diegans have looked to my leadership because I do the homework. I respect all input and I'm an honest broker in building consensus. These are the qualities needed to convert these contentious conversations and difficult issues and move our city forward. Sitting as a next council member is a natural extension of what I've been doing for the past two decades. Collaborating with stakeholders from all backgrounds and points of view to benefit the district and our city as a whole. My agenda is the agenda demanded by you, our district and the city. Whether it is your quality of life or the big issues facing our city. This opportunity is not a political launching point. My promise is spending the next four years, eight if I do a good job. Focused on meeting the needs of the neighborhoods and the city I love. Focused on the job you are hiring me to do and not what might come next. We need leaders with actual experience dealing with the city on a range of issues who understands how the city works. And more importantly, knows how to make the city operate better and more efficiently. My experience, my track record and my background show that I am that person. I am Joe Lakava running for city council. Thank you again to the planning board, the league and everybody who joined to watch tonight. Stay safe, stay healthy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lakava. Mr. Moore?
Well, I'm glad to be here tonight. It's always good to to kind of play a home game up here in up here in the the Carmel Valley Torrey Pines area. Been in this community for a long time, about a decade and a half as we've raised my son. We've, you know, I've had sadness and joy. I got divorced. I got engaged again. At my, my ex-wife, who's still a very good friend, lives right down the street. And we, we come here to raise our children and we come here to take care of our community. And I've been deeply involved in this community for a very long time. Founding a number of organizations that help young people and professionals and small business people like Business for Good get more involved in our community. And that leadership has been recognized and been very gratified by a very wide array, Republicans and Democrats. Eighteen, nineteen, I think twenty elected officials, current and former, we're up to now, have supported the campaign and I really appreciate that. But I say that just to, just to mention that, you know, I've got the experience and I came here from a little town called Macon, Georgia. Got a scholarship to Georgia Tech, joined the Peace Corps. I've always been committed to service. As I've run my firm, I've helped people get along better as they're trying to do business and as they're trying to grow their families. And I think we all need to recognize that we need to leave San Diego a better place than we found it. And that's what my commitment is to. I've watched this city spin itself in circles over so many issues. That are not the central problems plaguing our community. The central problems playing plaguing our community are quite simply our climate crisis, our housing crisis. And our economic crisis where we have a lot of people not able to make ends meet. And we can do better than that. And we need to leave a city for our kids that does better than that. And that's why I'm running and I hope you'll join me. My name's Will Moore.
Thank you. Well, on behalf of the Torrey Pines Community Planning Group and the League of Women Voters of San Diego. I want to thank both candidates for running for office and attending our forum this evening. Be sure to mail your ballot by November third and encourage others to do so. And thank you all again. You're here tonight because you follow the league motto. Don't just be a voter, be an informed voter. Thank you all and good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Good night. Stay safe.
Thanks, Joe.
Good night, Will. Take care. See you soon.
See you tomorrow. Right.